To order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, June 12, 2018, at 6:30 PM. Enroll call, please.
Mayor Alahuza's.
Here.
Vice Mayor Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seber.
Here.
Commissioner Kikta. Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Janet Tono from Saint Episcopal Church. If you please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegion.
Almighty God, our Heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in the city of Tarpon Springs, the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Pledge your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our commission meeting. This evening we'll begin with a special presentation to honor Mr. Christopher Steele. Mr. Christopher Steele is a great individual and outstanding citizen. He is a world-class artist. As an artist, he received many awards for his outstanding accomplishments in painting, including a European Travel Fellowship, the Pennsylvania Governor's Award for Outstanding Accomplishment in Fine Art. He was inducted into the Florida Artist Hall of Fame. His paintings can be found in many museums and private collections, including the governors mentioned in Florida and this Smithsonian Institution. In Tampa Bay area, you can find his work in St. Petersburg, City Hall, Tampa Bay International Airport, in many hotels in Clearwater Beach, Ruth Ecker Hall, and of course, in our City Library and the Heritage Museum. Mr. Steele, we'd like to thank you for your ongoing support to our community, and it's a privilege for me and my fellow commissions to honor you this evening. Just recently, we had the honor with my fellow commissions to present your beautiful print, changing tights to the President of Greece, His Excellency of Lopoulous, and to the mayors of our sister cities, Halimnos, Simeon, and Halki. They were amazed by the beautiful images of the painting that represents the uniqueness and the beauty of our city, and they thought they were still on the island. I want to thank you for allowing us to have your prints and share the work that you were able to do with our sister cities, and we're very grateful that you called Tarpon Springs your home. And if you please accept this plaque and the sponge diver that we'll present to you as appreciation from all of us from the City of Tarpon Springs. The plaque reads, "In appreciation to Christopher Steele for your contributions and continued support to the City of Tarpon Springs Mayor and Board of Commissions 2018, Mayor Chris Alahuza's, Vice Mayor Panther, Commissioner Seber, Commissioner Kikta, and Commissioner Carr." So we'd like to present that to you, my friend, Chris. And on behalf of the Board of Commissions, we'd like to present you with the sponge diver.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chris, if you don't mind, we'd like to get on the front, take a picture, and a good picture, is that okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When I was in Greece, I got to brag about you a lot. Of course, of course you can. Of course you can.
This is such a great city for an artist to live in. The antique stores provide and find things for me. The restaurants help me with my clients. The Tarpon Police, when we have an event, there's no way we could handle having those events without their support. We have all kinds of partnerships, like at the Heritage Center with Diane, and our local breweries, and with our local restaurants, and it's just... I wanted to say tonight that we've been busy with projects all over the place, but it's my wife and our family's decision that whether we're in a project or not, that we're now going to be open every year, just to have something to have people to come to town, because the downtown has just gotten to be such a great place to visit. So we're committed to being more active in the downtown. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We're now going to the commission comments. Vice Mayor Panther.
Yes, thank you, Christopher. It was definitely unique that we got to bring that to the leaders in Greece, something that no other town could bring them, and I was quite jealous. I would love to have one of those pieces in my house or my office, so it really depicts Tarpon well, and I think is a nice small capture of what we have in the Capitol. It's also very proud when I got to visit the Capitol with a leadership panelists to see Tarpon Springs, basically, along the whole chambers there in the House. So you definitely make us proud, and thank you for allowing us to bring those gifts to those leaders in Greece.
Thank you. Commissioner Kikta.
Thank you. Chris, your work is just so beautiful, and we love to showcase it here in our community. And as Vice Mayor said, you know, when I went up to Tallahassee, and we see Tarpon Springs on the walls in Tallahassee, that's really... I was so proud, and whoever I was with, I'm like, you know, this is our local artist. This is what he does. And we do have an artsy community, if I can say. So I'm happy that you're part of it, and that you do help bring people to our community, because people do want to see your work. And thank you for what you do, and I hope to see more things from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Seber.
Yes, we're so lucky to have you here, Chris, and not only as a friend, but for all you do, and as an artist for our community, and we have your work hanging at the New Vistro too, which wasn't mentioned, so we're very proud of that. But thank you, and I appreciate everything you do, and I look forward to any openings that you have, and we'll help you out with that. Thanks, Chris.
Commissioner Carr.
Thanks, Mayor. Really glad that you chose to stay in Tarpon Springs and expand your studio. Growing up, you were one of our parents' neighbors. My mom would always say, "This famous artist lives just a couple doors over," and I was like, "Okay, great, he's a famous artist." Until I got into college, I really started understanding how great your art was and appreciated your art even more. I echo the same comments. I was able to visit your art in the state Capitol, which was impressive to see. You have so many great works that... And then you're still choosing Tarpon Springs as your home. I think that really speaks volumes, the character of Tarpon Springs. Thank you for making this your home base, and all the great things that you've done for the city. So I'm happy that the mayor, and we honored you tonight, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here and now, thank you, Chris. Congratulations. We are now going to the public comments on the items that will not be discussed tonight. If you have any comments, please come forward. State your name and your address for the record, you'll be given four minutes.
I'm going to need more minutes, and Annie Samaco said that she would give me hers. Yes?
There'll be two extra minutes then.
How many?
Two extra minutes.
Two?
Two extra minutes.
Okay, this will be a speed read.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're going to be discussing this issue later. I think it's issue 13.
I don't know what you're going to be talking about.
You're going to be... What I want to talk about is six... I have six pieces of the comprehensive plan revisions and amendments, which are before you.
We're going to be talking about that later.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, whether I speak now or later.
You don't need to talk about this now, no. This is for the items that will not be discussed tonight.
I got you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. Do we have any public comments on the items that will not be going to be discussed tonight? Here and now, thank you. We go to the item number one, which is a proclamation. The proclamation is on Hurricane Awareness Month. The City of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation, "What as for the hurricane season officially begins June 1st and ends November 30th, and whereas Hurricane Awareness Month was started to spread awareness of the dangers and hazards of hurricanes, being aware is not being prepared, and history has shown that by knowing vulnerability and what actions to take, people can reduce the effects of the hurricane disaster. And whereas we are better prepared than ever before for the day storms, our technology, forecasting, and models have improved, and we have new ways to disseminate vital warnings and storm tracking information, still, it's never too early to prepare. And whereas winter hurricane season, let us renew our commitment to responsibility, and let us unite in common purpose to safeguard our families and community. And where else, I call up organizations, schools, median, and residents to share information about hurricane preparedness. And now therefore, I, Chris Alahuza's, by virtue of the authority vested in me, as the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby proclaim June 2018 as Hurricane Awareness Month, and Fire Chief Young is going to receive the proclamation." You want to say if you've worked your can, or you can work your presentation? Go ahead, you can say what you think.
He's going to go to his presentation.
Do you want to do your presentation first?
Sure, we'll do that.
Okay. Well, item number two is Hurricane Season 2018, Fire Department Presentation, and of course, Fire Chief Young will do the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Chief Young. Well, it's that time of year, and it's hard to believe it's already here. Seems like we just got done with this storm, and now we're getting ready for the next Last year, we had a little visitor called Irma, made landfall. It's the first storm that's made landfall in this area for quite some time. Pictured up here on the screen is the EOC in action. It's the first time in my almost 30 years that I can remember our emergency operations center being activated, where we actually had a storm come in, and we had to go through all the processes and all the steps to make sure the city was taken care of. So we did well, and I think the city should be proud of their staff. They all worked hard for those few days that we were here cramped in that little room. So... And this year, we sent a team down to the Governor's Hurricane Conference from multiple departments to get a little more education going and find out what we need to do to make the city even better for this upcoming year. I was really proud of the team. They all took a lot of classes. They were very proactive in trying to find new classes while they're there and broaden their knowledge of storms. So let's start with a disaster plan for your family. The main thing is, it could be life or death, so you need to make sure you're ready. Know how to escape your home. If you stay at home, if there's a problem, you need to know how to get out. Where your family members are going to be. Make sure, if you have kids, you have a meeting place. It's very important, because things can get a little chaotic, so make sure if you lose track of them, you always know where you're going to meet with them at the end of the day. Know how to get in and out of the city or your neighborhood if the storm comes through. Having a backup plan of getting out of your neighborhood. Sometimes the routes are closed off for whatever reason. Know what you're going to take with you, and where you're going to go. That was kind of the main theme last year, because nobody knew exactly what this storm was going to do. It kept changing. I know my wife and I had many conversations, should we leave, should she not leave, and so kind of have an idea if you're going to leave, where you're going to go. One thing we did find out is that if you're going to go, try to do it. Make plans early and make reservations somewhere where you need to go, because they were hard to come by if you decide to go too late. We even tried to get her up into Atlanta, and they couldn't find any place to stay. If you need to, you can shelter in place, but make sure you have all the provisions and items that are going to get you through the time. We don't recommend that you shelter in place by any means. We prefer you to evacuate and get out of harm's way. Something to make sure you all check is your homeowner's or renter's insurance. Make sure it's up to date, and it covers everything that you may need. Start playing the what-if game. It's that time. Start saying, "What are we going to do if it happens, and what are our plans?" Make sure you have the adequate supplies. If you decide to leave, what you're going to take with you, and if you're going to shelter in place, make sure you know where you're going to store these supplies, so if something happens, you know exactly where they're at, and what you need, and where you're going to go get them. Something for a survival kit. Water. Water is the most essential thing. Like last year, when the storm came through, some of the water systems were in critical need, and luckily, we didn't run out of water, but you always want to make sure you have plenty of water, just in case the systems go down. If you take medications that make you thirsty, you want to have a little extra water. So usually about a gallon of water a day for a person. Make sure you have enough food for three days, if you stay home or if you're on the road. Make sure you have perishable foods with you. Something that people don't think about is the kitchen supplies, can openers. I heard one story, somebody got someplace, and they had all these cans of food, but they couldn't open them, because they didn't bring a can opener with them. So make sure you bring your can openers. Tools, in case you need to work on anything where you're ever you're at. Screwdrivers, hammers, vice grips are good, because they can hold things together. Sanitary supplies, clothing and bedding. You want to make sure you have a couple sets of bedding, if you can get it, because you might be in it for quite a while, and you might be in some not-so-nice, clean places if you have to leave the area. Flashlights with extra batteries, and a battery-powered radio is always good to have with you, because the TV stations and stuff, cable could go down, and radios might be the only way you get some information. Bring your household documents with you that are very important to you. You don't want to leave them at home, because if something happens, they might not be there when you get back. And then, of course, specialty items for babies and stuff. Make sure you don't forget about the little ones. Lots of diapers. And of course, cash. You never know if the ATMs are going to work, and you might need cash. If you find a store that's open, that you might need to buy some supplies, and the credit cards machines may not work. And just make sure you adjust your kit based on your own needs. So prepare your home, very important. If you have shutters, you know, make sure they're in working order, so you can shutter your windows. Glass, things that break, the glass, are usually flying debris. So if you have shutters, make sure they work in good condition, and don't tape your windows, because that's not going to help. You'll see people that put the big duct tape across your windows. That doesn't... That's not going to stop anything from flying through your windows. All it's going to do is help pick up the big pieces of glass. Check your weather stripping. That's that time to start looking at the weather stripping and caulk around your windows and doors. Make sure it's in good shape, so if it does rain pretty hard, you're not getting any water in your home. And check your garage door. If it's time to start thinking about replacing your garage door, do it now, and always look for a garage door that's weather-rated. Sandbags. The city does provide sandbags when the storms start getting close, and we have a couple stations throughout the city for residents to go to, usually down at the end of the docks, and one over by the water park. So get in your yard ready. Make sure you prune your trees. Make sure you pick up those branches and stuff after you're done, because those things can fly around, and they will go through the windows, or they could hit somebody if somebody's out walking around. Hopefully not. Clean your gutters and downspouts. Make sure that they are clean and can take the flow of water when it's raining really hard, otherwise, the water will back up and cause damage to your roof. And the furniture, all the kids' toys, yard furniture, start bringing those in. When you hear that the warnings are coming up, get them out of the way, put them in the garage. Don't drain your pool, and we recommend that you chlorinate your pool a little bit more, and you can always throw some of the pool furniture in the pool itself. If you don't have room, that way it'll be in the water and won't start flying around. Ready your vehicle. So if you're going to hit the road, make sure your car's ready. First aid kits, again, bottled water and food. Basic toolkits, jumper cables or flares are good to have with you. Flashlights, AC/DC power inverters, so you can plug in your cell phones, anything else that you may need to plug in, you'll have that adapter to power your stuff up, and of course, chargers for your cell phones. And a map with the shelter locations is always good to have. That way, if you decide to go to shelter, you know exactly how to get there. So here's the storm names for this year. We've already crossed one off. Alberta already showed up a little before the season, but luckily, it wasn't too bad, and it didn't affect us. So there's the names for this year's storms. If your name's up there, congratulations. We'll blame you later. All right, here's the forecast. It's above-average season this year. Tropical storms, 12 to 15. Last year, we had 17 storms. Tropical storms, 6 to 8. Hurricanes, last year, we had 10 storms. And major hurricanes, 3 to 5, we had 6 last year. So the U.S. named storm landfall, they expect 3 to 4 major storms to hit landfall this year. Again, you never know if this is accurate or not. Sometimes, in the middle of the season, they'll adjust the number of storms based on the season. I did hear a report the other day that they think maybe this number may be a little high, because the Atlantic is still a little cool, and there may be an El Nino developing late in the season, which would be good for us. But we'll have to wait and see if that comes to happen or not. This was an interesting thing I found at the hurricane conference. This is just the cone that you always see on TV. The blue cone was back in 2008. That's what they showed. That's how big a cone they showed. 2012, it shrunk, and this year's cone is even smaller. As you can see, the models have gotten so much better over the years that they have really come down to be able to tell you almost exactly where that storm's going to go. One instructor down at the conference said that that cone there, in the next 3 to 4 years, the red cone, will be even smaller. That's how much the models have... The computers have been able to pick up the data and translate it into what's going to happen. So that's good. It kind of lets us know a little bit more in advance what's going to be going on with us. Storm surge, you always hear about storm surge. Water is the major problem, more than the wind. More people die because of storm surge than any other part of the storm. So you can see the different levels. If you're in A evacuation, it means... And we start evacuating, that means the storm surge could be up to 8 feet. And up to evacuation E, you know, we could see water at the 30 feet in the city if we ever got to that point. That would be pretty catastrophic for most of us in the city. So shelters. We have this middle school out on the other side of town. There is the shelter. That is not a special needs shelter, so if you have special needs, or a family member has special needs, they need medical attention, if they go to a shelter, you'll need to contact the fire department, and we will put you on our special needs list. Last year, during the storm, we evacuated about 120 special needs people from the city and took them to a special needs shelter. The closest pet shelter, according to this, is in Dunedin. I just heard yesterday that they are talking to some of the schools about opening up a few more shelters that will take pets, so that's a good thing. If you have pets, you need to register your pet. They prefer that you register them. Make sure they have a kennel, and you'll need to supply all the food for the animals while they're there. You can call that number, or go to that website and register your pets, and they'll be taken care of there. So here's some really good stuff. On your cell phone, if you go to your app store and download ReadyPannellus, it's a free app, it'll give you all kinds of information of what's going on in the county. It'll tell you what evacuation zone you are currently in, if you're standing in Clearwater. It'll tell you what evacuation in your zone you're at, or it'll give you all information of what's happening in the county, updates on the storms, and everything else. The AlertPannellus there, you can actually register for that through ReadyPannellus. What AlertPannellus is, is a like a reverse 911 system. You go on there, you register, your phone, and you'll get special alerts of things happening, such as through texting, text messages, or actually a phone call, a voice recording. We have that in the city also, and actually, we just used that system when we had the water main break on the other side of town. We can block off a certain area and let people know what's going on. We called over 17,000 homes within an hour to let everybody know what was going on. So it's a great system. You can register yourself through the county, either that website there, or if you download the ReadyPannellus, it has a little link there. You can get that on your phone. It'll actually call your home phone also. And it'll also let you know your evacuation zone, which you should know, it's on your trim notice, and we're putting out maps in all these little other places, the city hall, library, things like that, public safety facility. If you need a map or a guide, just let us know, we can get you one also. They redid it this year. It's a little bit nicer, a little easier to read and understand. We just received those about a week ago. Again, interactive map on the website, the county's website. If you punch your address in, it'll actually bring up a map and show you where your house is and the evacuation zone, and the storm surge information should be in there also. So preventative measures for utilities. There is some systems in place that if we start getting some flooding waters and stuff like that, the city will start shutting some water lines down to protect the system, so when we turn them back on, there won't be any damage to them. So we will try to get that information out as soon as we start doing something like that through the reverse 911 system, so people know that the water's going to be shut down. But that's just a protective measure for the city's water infrastructure. So social media is how we can get ahold of you, let you know what's going on. The Pannellus County Emergency Management has a Twitter account, if you're on Twitter, also Facebook. Bright House Channel 615 has information all the time during a storm. And then the city's website, and the city's web, Facebook, the police departments, Facebook, and the fire departments, Facebook. We will be simultaneously putting out information on those sites during the storms and when we're getting close to what's the storm coming, and try to relay as much information as we can. The whole idea is to make sure everybody's informed and make the right decision. So this was Irma. Make sure yourselves... Make sure you are prepared, especially if you see this coming. Hopefully, we won't, but we always want to make sure everybody's safe and can get out of the city if they need to, and be safe. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Fire Chief Young. Thank you for the presentation, and I would thank the team for attending the training on 2018 Governor's Hurricane Conference. I have a question to ask you in regards to transportation for disabled. Do they need to be registered with the fire department? Transportation for the disabled people?
Yes, they need to go call the fire department. We can get them the forms they need to fill out. It's called special needs people. These are people that are on oxygen, bedridden, just can't get around, or they needed extra care if they're at a shelter. They go to the Dunedin Shelter down in the Dunedin Middle School is where the designated special needs shelter is. So we get them there via buses. special needs shelter is, so we get them there via buses, and we also get them back home, once it's safe to come back.
Do you have a vehicle to communicate with them, let them know that?
We will be calling them, once we activate that system, we manually start calling them and letting them know, it goes by evacuation zone, so if they're in an A evacuation zone and the evacuation is only for A residents, we'll start calling all those people on the phone and letting them know that we'll be setting up to come and get them, so they can start preparing.
Thank you, thank you. Are there any commission comments, questions, Commissioner Seaver?
Thank you very much, it's great that, you know, you do this every year, and this, our website has been updated with this information, is that correct, our city website or not yet?
I don't know if Judy has put it on there yet or not, but I'll check that tomorrow, make sure.
I know, I look at it every once in a while, I know it's on there, but I didn't know it had been updated yet.
I'm sure she has, I'm sure she has.
Like last year with Irma, I had people texting me and calling me and asking me what evacuation zone they were in, so I remember calling Mark and saying, is that on our website? Because people don't know what evacuation zone they're in, so it's important that you know that.
Yeah, the map, I don't think will be on there, but again, I would refer them to get to that app, if they have a cellphone that they can look it up, or they can call the fire department during, before the storm and we can start looking it up.
It's on there now.
It is.
Because people couldn't get through the Pannellus County website, so.
Oh, was it down?
With Irma last year, we, we had that, we had to do that, but yeah, thank you, it's great to inform everyone, and thanks for the presentation.
Commissioner Carr? Thank you for the presentation, I know there's a lot of people watching on TV and online as well, sandbags are great, but if you don't put a protector of plastic behind the sandbags, the water's going to come right through because there's air gaps and it's porous, so use sandbags, make sure you use a thick garbage bag below it and raise it up the side of your doors as well, I know it's saved me in the past doing that.
Yeah, sandbags can work if you use them that way, if you just put them up, they're not quite as effective, plastic bags always just an extra barrier.
Commissioner Seaver? Thank you, and Chief, thank you for this presentation, I look forward to it every year, there's always some little new information that's brought to us, and I do appreciate it. What Commissioner Seaver was saying about the evacuation zones, I was, we were getting texts and phone calls and stuff, I think Pannellus County, there were so many people looking for their evacuation zone, like at the last minute, that the site went down, so I think ours was too small to really see, because ours was up, it was, we had access somewhere on our website, and it was just kind of small to see, so hopefully we can supply a better map that's a little clearer.
We can look into that, I'm assuming that the county went down because it was probably just overwhelmed.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I was told.
That's why we recommend trying to find that out now, so everybody knows what they're doing.
Yeah, but you know, I'm in, thank God, in a high and dry place, and I had like 12 people at my house, and we boarded up, and when you put that last board up, you can't see outside anymore, so we waited to the last possible minute to do that, because you don't know what's happening outside, all you hear is wind going and things flying, and it's, and it is scary. But you know, I just made sure before everybody got going in their own directions, this is, this is it, the water's here, if the water, if the running water happens to go out, this is what we do, food is here, this is here, supplies are here, power goes out, just let everybody know, here's, here's, you know, flashlights and candles and whatever, and just, just so there's not a panic, because you never know what's going to happen, the roof could fly off, so you just don't know, but, and keep calm, that's all I can say about that, but it was a scary situation last year, so I hope we don't have to go through that again, and when it came to our, that sun is right in my eyes, our command center, our staff did a fabulous job, I can't say it enough times, our staff did a phenomenal job, we had volunteers from our city staff, we had our police and fire, all there, thank you.
And she went dark.
And I got to see the command center, I came up once or twice, and I was so impressed, and I think we won an award for that once, didn't we, Mark? We won an award for our command center, so again, thank you, and thank you for the commission and everybody that supports that, and all the money that it costs and time, and it just, like I said, we did a phenomenal job, a lot of people don't understand what goes behind that, but again, thank you for this presentation.
Thank you.
Hi, Sheriff Pan. Yes, thank you, and, and thank you, Chief, I've always said, you did a very good job like half a week into your position.
Three days.
I think as Commissioner Kika said, you know, I think Tarpon Shine and the EOC process, and that's impressive being that that group really hadn't had any, any dry runs since, you know, '05, '06, I'm not sure much of that group was in the city at that, at that time, and we learned we were on those countywide calls, just how, just how disorganized a lot of other, not, not just cities, but organizations were, so I felt proud that Tarpon, though, though did as well as we did. You covered a lot of great points, you know, I think the biggest lesson I learned, and I'm huge into prepping and preparedness, is that it's not so much the storm that's the bad part, it's, 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 it's the week afterwards, we have no power, no access to quality food, et cetera, so I really do encourage people, you know, unless you live in a non-evac zone and you have hurricane shutters and supplies, if you have the ability to leave, you should, and you should plan early on how to do that, I've already told my wife and daughters that, 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 that was their first and last storm, so they'll be going to their brother's house or her brother's house up, up in Louisiana, he's far away from the water, and, because that's, that's not comforting, but I think we need to increase, we need to encourage more people to like the city's Facebook page, I know Facebook was a main outlet during the storm, and I think that as much as we can get out there on Facebook as possible, and then Twitter, because that can be accessed when there's little bandwidth as well, but you, you cover great points, I encourage people to, to, to prepare early, many of the supplies you talked about, you can get on Amazon for, for pretty cheap, that's where I get most of mine from, and for the water, you, you don't have to buy all like a bunch of bottled water, I, I, I keep about 100 of those bottles on hand, but I also buy five of those five gallon jugs, like for the water cooler, then you just can get a little hand pump on Amazon, that, that can, that can pump the water out, and that's all the water you, you, that, that you would need. But again, you should know your zone, but unless you live in a fortified, in a, in a non-evac zone, saying you're, well, I'm a B and not an A, that, that's a hair difference, so I would encourage you to have a plan and get out, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments on this item? Your none, thank you. Next item is Gateway Signs Public Art Committee, and the presentation will be given by the Vice Chair, Dolly Vatikeyotis.
Good evening, I'm Darlene Vatikeyotis, I live at 538 West Cedar Street, our new home in Greettown, and I am here tonight representing the Public Art Committee as the Vice Chairman. I'd like to say that Sheri Orr is enjoying the wonderful Maine weather the entire summer, so she has asked in her absence for me to address the group. I'd like to just give a little bit of background, as you recall, we were tasked as a group to come up with some alternative gateway signs, by that I mean areas within the community that address into Tarpon Springs, and you have in your backup particular slides that we'll go through today, these are basically design suggestions, nothing's been decided on, of course, because you haven't made that decision, but these are just design suggestions. I'm here with members of our committee, and I appreciate their attendance and support tonight, and I'd also like to say that during the course of our meetings in February and March, we were each tasked by the chairman to go into the internet and look at various communities around the country, that would perhaps be the size of Tarpon Springs, but not necessarily, and see what sort of gateway signs they have to their particular communities. Some of them were much more elaborate, concrete, different sorts of things, but what we've got for you tonight is sort of a, a mix of different approaches, and we'd like your feedback, and as I say, these are suggestions at this particular time. Let's see if I can do this. All right. All right, as you see in the slide here in front of you, these are the, what we call the gateway signs, these are entrances to Tarpon Springs, both from the north as well as the south, and also coming off of US 19, and then alternate 19. I think you all are familiar with that, and on the left-hand side, you see what is our current signage, most especially there at US 19 at Tarpon Avenue. We did a little bit of history, and we really couldn't identify the time by which those were first put up, but they, they suffice for now, and I think that, that we are looking with the suggestion of Commissioner Carr and some of the others, to sort of update those and have a different approach to them. I am not a techie. All right, in this first slide, you can see, we have incorporated the paneling and the, and the black trim, as it says, to complement the new street signs, that I know the economic development, some of those offices within City Hall are working on as well. This is a vertical sign, and as you can see, it has our characteristic sponge diver helmet, but when I showed them to my husband, whose husband, whose father was a diver, he said, that's a Mark V US Navy diving helmet, that's not a sponge diver helmet, and I said, okay, explain the difference, and the difference is the munions across the front, they would not be as sponge divers covering on their glass. US Navy divers were dealing with steel and other objects in the water, so they had to protect that glass covering, so that they could be safe in what they were doing, divers need that clarity, they need to be able to see out through that area, so in any design that we do, those munions will be gone, the cross hatching. But this, this was one of the more attractive designs that we as a committee thought would be representative, and I believe Clearwater's got something similar as far as a vertical sign that would attract attention, and of course, we want to complement, and the next one is very similar, and it actually would go in line with our historical buildings, the cultural center, City Hall, some of the other buildings that we have around town that, that have that red brick, and I think it would tie very well into, into our community. Oops, sorry. This particular sign is, shows a fish. Now I know that one of you commissioners was especially interested in having a fish on it, we're not quite sure that this would be something you want to approach, but it is an option, once again, the vertical sign, and on the right, as you can see, that's a bit of a ledge, and that particular logo, or that marking to the right, would be something that could be temporary as far as being up for a year or a two-year, and when the city receives other accolades and other awards, we could change that out. Right at the moment, USA Today has not given us authorization, although we did win that wonderful, most historic city, but that would be the, the place that would most likely, because there is a bit of a rise in a ledge, so you could put different sorts of announcements or whatever on a year-to-year basis, such as this, you'll see it here, best historic small town in the USA, once again, the, the vertical signage with, with the fish. This one just brings a little bit of a flavor of the modernistic to it, again, I asked my husband, and he wasn't quite sure what this was, but, and since there are no waves in the Gulf of Mexico, but anyway, this gives you one other approach, if you wanted to kind of be a little more artistic in, in your views, those are waves to the right Once again, another option, and as I said, members of the committee did a lot of canvassing on the internet throughout the country, and these were sort of the best that, that came forward to suit our particular community. The helmet, the historical small town representation, again with the fish. And I will be happy to answer any questions or discuss any of these designs, and we are open to any kind of suggestions you may have as far as going forward as a committee on this project.
Ms. Vatikeyotis, thank you, our, thank you, and all the committee members for your work you do.
You're welcome.
And thank you for working for your efforts to beautify our city. Consistency to me is very important, I think all of them, it should be the same, all the gateway signs, it should be the same throughout the city.
That's our plan.
Yeah, but I do like the, the helmet design one, the first one that you have, with the modification of the helmet that you were talking about.
Yes. All right, now I've lost it, oh, we're into the hermit. Okay, I know which one you're talking about.
That's the first one.
Can you get back to this, Denise?
When I was in the Navy, I had people doing this for me, so I apologize that I'm not very techie. Yes, that was our favorite as well as a committee, we liked that, the helmet, the fish on occasion looks sort of like a dead fish on a piece of wood.
Because the helmet.
So, yeah, it's a little, but we wanted to approach, and the commissioner knows which one he's interested in.
Well, the helmet represents our culture and our.
Absolutely.
Heritage that we have in Tarpon Springs.
I'm sorry. Yes, yes, that was the, that was the one that would, would take the vote of our group as well. I told you I shouldn't touch that machine. Right.
Yeah.
I think, do you prefer the darker brick, ours, our thought was the next slide with the darker brick, because it matches the historical buildings in town, but either or certainly.
Either brick to me is good, I think it's, it's good, but I like to have the special designation on below the helmet if it's possible, you know, the one for the best small town.
As opposed to the opposite side?
Either way, as long as we have it there, it will be nice.
As soon as we get authorization from USA Today, and the chamber is working on that, since they were the guiding force on this, that will certainly be on there, because that's, that's monumental.
Whatever we decide, we need to have it, you know, to have them all the same.
Correct.
Be consistent throughout the city.
Absolutely.
Because now we have so many different types, so we need to get away.
You're right, and some of them, like on South Pannell, on Alt 19 down south by Klosterman, that one was destroyed in a storm, and they're, they're just not as attractive as they needed to be for our beautiful city.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor Panther.
Yes, thank you, thank you for, for all you do in your committee, you have skillsets I have none of, so I often yield to my colleagues on artistic designs, but I will say, I agree with the mayor, I do like the vertical signs, I think it brings attention when one's driving the rest, the other, like, like the Tarpon design, you know, four and three, they're, they're, they're nice, but it just looks like a sign, you know, so I like the vertical signs, it draws attention, I did like the artsy one, helmet design three, but you said, I guess you want to keep it all the same, I wouldn't put that, like, all around the town, maybe if there was a, you know, like a.
The one with the waves, is that the one you're talking about?
That would be appropriate, but I'm, I'm not married to that, but I wouldn't want to put that on every entrance, but if there was an artsy spot, we, 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 we wanted to put a sign in, but anyway, I like the vertical signs, and I like the ones where we can put, like a, like a placard, like you discussed, that we can swap in and out.
Yes.
I do prefer the helmet over the fish, I mean, the, the fish is fine, I just keep thinking about that fish at Walgreens where you press the button and it talks.
Yes, I totally understand where you're coming from on that.
So, and, but the helmet, I think, is indicative of our heritage and, and more than just.
Yes.
Fish, so, yeah, I think you, you all, you all brought some great, some, some great options to us, so yeah, I definitely like the, the vertical with the helmet and one that we can place a sign on, like a, like a, like a placard, besides that, the color of the brick and the options within those vertical signs, I'll leave that up to my colleagues, thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your comments.
Commissioner Carr.
Okay, thanks Mayor, thank you for bringing these back, and I know this is a passionate item of mine that I asked that you all look at, and thank you for taking initiative in doing this. I do like the vertical ones a lot, I agree with what the mayor and vice mayor and what you've said also.
Yes.
Can you give me an idea of how tall these would be? Do you have any thoughts about that yet?
Well, we haven't actually gotten to the details of them, we've just sort of getting the design concept right now, we certainly would want them to be expressive enough on the highway that you could see them, but, but not in a position where they would be, you know, dangerous if something blew them down.
Yeah, well, to me, this says like, you're in Tarpon Springs, but it's not going to like knock you over, like you're coming into Tarpon Springs, right? But it's stately, it's really, really good-looking, I think, overall, if I had the choice between the brick or the rock, I think that that might be a good decision, maybe on the final, though. I think that that might be a good decision, maybe on the final, the comeback and give us a couple of options.
Right.
A few suggestions I would make is looking at the lettering of Tarpon Springs. The R.O. plant has the lettering, it's more of like a block lettering.
And we can change any of that, that's very flexible.
Classier look. The coloring of maroon is, I'm okay with that still. Or if it would just be one of the other colors that matches, if it's a copper, that might match the metal that's behind the helmet, or something along those lines. But I think the block lettering would look a lot better than the current lettering that's on here. I think another important aspect is make sure that we have the date, the city is established, established in 18...
'77.
'76.
Yeah.
That's a good suggestion. Thank you for that.
I think that one's important. I know I was talking to a couple of the members earlier about the metal, if it's just going to be a piece of copper, if it's going to be just a regular metal that's a dark color.
The metal of the helmet you're talking about?
Behind it.
Oh, okay.
That's sitting behind the helmet, in front of the stone or the brick. I do think it would be neat to see copper there. It's a natural metal, right, that would patina over time and have some character to it. That would be nice to see as well. I was initially, I mean, I said, "Let's go ahead and do a tarpon. We're Tarpon Springs, we're not Sponger Springs." I do think that the helmet does look really well. And this design, though, overall, I'm not against putting a fish on it, but I would, again, lean towards the rest of the commission. It sounds like they're leaning more towards the helmet right now already. I don't have to ever die on a fish or helmet on our front sign. But I do think it's important to have something that's stately and that it really makes an impact when you come into Tarpon Springs. I do agree with the other comments that it's important to have some type of placard that could be removed and added on. We have, our, like, our high schools, for example, have a lot of great, like, our band gets nationally recognized year after year. We have occasionally a soccer team or a baseball team or football team that goes to states or state finals. And I think it's good to recognize those types of people in the community also, and that's a great area to do that as well.
That was our thinking behind that, being able to make that an interchangeable disc or some sort of a placard that could be, you know, after a year, if we have the same distinction next year, or some other thing that would come forward.
You know, the exciting thing about, it was great that we got the recognition of best historic small town in the country.
Yes.
But before that, we had two other recognitions within a month and a half of each other as one of the top, was it Retirement Magazine named Tarpon Springs one of the top Gulf Coast communities to retire in? And then Expedia named Tarpon Springs one of the best cities to visit, that's, visit outside the country, but not actually leave your country, as Greece. So those are other things that would be neat. I think this is the best recognition that we can do. Following up, though, and my request is, we want to look at also signage, and I've mentioned this to the city manager last week when we rode around town, is signage, looking at the signage for the public buildings and then also our parks. And I do think these other designs are very nice, but I do lean towards the vertical ones as more of the ones that I would prefer to see in our gateway. I think, like, the design, helmet design number four, the tarpon design number three, would be good to see something like this on our public buildings, or something along those lines. You're pulling in a similar brick or stone, and it's still a permanent structure, it's not going to rot, it's made out of wood, like we have today, so.
My understanding, Commissioner, is that the city does have a group that's working on this. The city manager could address that. But I know that they're looking at signs in the historic area and then other signage around the community that would fall under their purview, as opposed to public art, when it comes to building attachments.
Okay. Thanks again for bringing this back before us. I think you guys did a great, timely, you did it quick. I think you did a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dolly. I know I've been asking about gateway signs for four years now, so I'm glad that we're finally looking at them. And I think it's a good idea to have the year that Tarpon's established, so I like that idea. I differ a little bit differently on the designs, because I really like the welcome to Tarpon Springs. I think that is something that I think would be nice to see coming in Tarpon Springs. So I like design number four, of course, with the helmet. But, so I'll go with, you know, whatever the other commissioners decide, but I just like the welcome to Tarpon Springs, so I like that one the best. So, but like I said, I'll go with whatever the others decide.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, as I said, these are design suggestions. We were hoping that you would like one of these that we brought forward, and if not, we were prepared to go back and scratch our heads and do continue research. But with your direction, you know, we can proceed and get some of the details as far as sign materials, and certainly working with the city on placement and that sort of thing.
And I think you're going to have to look at two different ones, because the large vertical ones, obviously, but some of our gateways where we may have to get some right-of-way or some permissions, the sign like Helmet Four may have to go. And when you showed the map, there's a couple of those places we may not... So you probably need to do the main one for the main entrance, and the smaller, where we may have a smaller piece of land or have to get an agreement, we might want to do something that matches that, but in the style of Helmet Four. For a couple of those locations up there, we might have to go with this type of sign. So that's also in consideration, too. Might have to use a combination.
We'll certainly research all of that. Ideally, we'd like to be consistent with each of the signs, so that it would carry through in the community. But if there are restraints as far as space, or, you know, trees, or whatever might be the case, we'll certainly accommodate each of those.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this back to us. It is, I love the designs.
Thank you.
You've done a great job with this. It'd be nice to have some conformity within the city. You know, just the signs we have right now, I guess they help a lot. But I don't know who designed them, but we need something new. Also, maybe, I don't know if we can put Tree City USA on here as well? Because I know we have our little signs that, throughout the city, that say Tree City USA, if we could put...
We'd have to research that and find out if there's any limitations as far as, you know, authority to do that, or, you know, space on the sign itself.
Okay. And I do like the vertical sign with the sponge helmet. And, but I was thinking also, you know, on 19, just past Klosterman, going north, there's a sign there, so maybe we might have to go with a smaller sign in that area. And the one on alternate 19 that got destroyed, we might have to go with a smaller sign because of, you know, height restrictions and all that. So I don't know if the design number four would fit, because I'm not sure how big, you know, you're looking at, or something like the Helmet Design Three in those areas. But if we want everything to conform, then the Helmet Design Four would be probably the better option. But, yeah, I like to see that, maybe on 19, where Klosterman... I don't know. I mean, I don't, like I said, I don't know the height or anything, but just something to think about. We're definitely going to have to put something like, something different than the first one we were looking at, the Helmet Design Number One, because of those areas are going to be restricted.
We'll have to just investigate all of that with the city's assistance to find out, you know, like the city manager said, right-of-ways and distances, things of that sort. So, but we'll certainly work closely on that regard.
But, yeah, I think these are great. You know, I'm open to either the light color brick or the regular brick, whatever. But I like that design, so, with the correct helmet on it.
Yes, the correct helmet. We've got to do that.
But thank you so much for all your work on this.
You're very welcome. I appreciate your fine comments.
Thank you for the presentation. We go into the public comments. Do we have any public comments on this item?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Do we have any public comments on this item? Here, now, thank you very much. We go to concern agenda. Item number four is satisfaction release of liens. Number five is the attorney fees for Johnson and Jackson invoice, 1883, 2695, and 2696. Number six is a special events. Number A, Fourth of July picnic in the park, July 4, 2018. And B is the Independence Day fireworks display, July 4, 2018. Number seven is the award file, number 180125 NRS, single source purchase of radio equipment. Number eight is the award bid, number 180111BRS, replace six roll-up sectional doors for the public safety building. Number nine is to ratify an increase in renew file, number 170109CCM, utilizing U.S. Communities Purchasing Alliance contract, number 15JLP023, for air-conditioned products, installation services, and related products and services. Number 10 is the award file, number 180132CJJ, industrial and commercial supplies and equipment through Florida State contract, And number 11 is the award file, 180136CJJ, technology services, solutions, and related products through the U.S. Communities Purchasing Alliance contract, number 4400006645. Any items that you'd like to pull?
Just have a quick question on 6B, and then...
6B?
Yeah, and then number 11 I want to pull.
Number 11 you want to pull? You want to ask the question on number 6B?
Yes. Does Fred Howard Park have free parking for the beach during Fourth of July? Do we have that worked out with the county?
It will be after 6, I believe. Yeah, it will be free after 6.
After 6 o'clock, so I missed that in the backup. I don't know if we could press the county for that.
The fireworks go off about 9.
I understand that, but it's a national holiday, and the fact that our county decided to come to Tarpon Springs and charge our residents the park and our beach is always still frustrating to me. There's two county parks that charge parking. One's Fort DeSoto and one's Tarpon Springs. I know Sunset Beach has seen a lot more of increased traffic because of that. But with a national holiday, I think that's something that we should reach out to as a commission, to the county commission, and ask for a reduction during that time. I know it's a moneymaker for them, but at the same time, it's a national holiday where we're celebrating America. And I think it would be appropriate for our residents to be able to park for free throughout the day there, so.
Well, again, we negotiated that, and we got 6 o'clock. We certainly, if you say, we can ask. We're kind of the late, the late point of the process, so.
Thank you. Well, since we're talking about item number six on special events, I'd like to say that the Fourth of July picnic in the park, every year, has been sponsored by the Waste Management. They pay for everything, and to give the opportunity to the people in Tarpon Springs to have a great time for Fourth of July. Any other questions on the items four through 11? Excuse me, four through 10, we're pulling number 11. Are there any public comments on this item? Here, now, I need a motion for... Fourth through 10. You got it?
Yes.
I have second, and roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta? Yes. Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor, who's this?
Yes, thank you. We are now going to the item number 11. Commissioner Carr?
Thanks. I would like to ask the city manager and one of the chiefs to help us out with this. It's a significant amount of money that's being spent on technology, which I feel is important, and it's being used for the EOC. The fire chief presented earlier on the importance of the EOC and being prepared. I know multiple commissioners asked the city manager and the chiefs at the time to come back and let us know what items that need to be purchased to have a streamlined EOC and something that can really protect our residents. So I'd just like some more information on this. I would like to point out a couple of things before this is brought up, to talk about maybe what other, like, for instance, there are some TVs purchases, and I know that the EOC might be open once every couple of years, or it might be opened up multiple times in the same year, but just to have a better idea of how they could be utilized throughout the year, instead of just sitting with dust collecting on them. And I would like to point out, for future quotes that are presented to the board for backup, we've got three different items that aren't really clarified, that I'd ask for clarification on, for installation of the products from the cart that's going to hold the mainframe of this 84-inch computer, installation materials, and then also an EOC upgrade with maintenance services. I think it's good that we have as much backup as we can when we're looking at these expenditures that are close to $100,000. So if, can you help me out on this?
I've got the police chief, fire chief, and the IT fellow, so whichever one of you three wants to go in on your center.
I'll begin if you want. Which specific questions you want answered? The TVs?
Yeah.
Just kind of go down the line. All right. As you know, Hurricane Irma, we experienced some communication issues in that EOC. We did a whole extensive study. Our IT director is here, our fire chief is there, is back there. A lot of the stuff you see is a major upgrade for our EOC center to provide connectivity, to provide up-to-date technology, so we're in sync with everybody else, is very important. The TVs, if you saw when the fire chief gave his presentation, you see how that whole EOC is set up. Every department head has a section on that table where they're disseminating information and communicating. The TVs, the seven of them, are actually lined up. They specked out that whole room around the table, so we can see what is going on with big screens. So if the police department's got stuff going on, it's here. If purchasing has stuff going on, it's there. So it really enhances our ability to communicate with each other in EOC. There's a specific reason why that was specked out like that, and why we need those TVs. I know I work with Suzanne on it, and this vendor is on state contract. They specked out the whole thing. Life cycle on this stuff's five to 10 years. So we believe that this is a very good investment for the EOC. And those TVs also, as you know, that room is a multipurpose room. So we do training in that room. The fire department uses that room for all kinds of services for the public. We do citizens academy there, so. In all actuality, those TVs aren't just going to be sitting there collecting dust until we have an event, you know. We're definitely going to be utilizing that room and those TVs and the technology in there for other uses, too.
Yeah, thanks. I mean, it was clear, I got enough backup through my emails, but I think it's important that we highlight this for our residents, because you guys do a lot in the EOC, as the police, the fire, and our IT technology side. So thanks for bringing this back before the commission and listening to our request to make sure that we have the most updated EOC to protect our residents and respond in the need of an emergency. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Do you have any other questions?
No.
Mark, could you read right what was sent in the email about how that's used year-round and training and whatnot, that TV?
Yes, it is. Like the chief pointed out, it is used for training, internal training. We hold other, we've held training there for outside groups. We've hosted, we're able to, as you said, when we got chosen as one of the best centers and stuff, we actually use that as a model for cities or other places to come and show that as an example, how this at the EOC. So there are a lot of other uses for that.
And the citizens academy sees it at least once a class, if not twice, depending on the location for fire.
Yeah. And with the popularity of Irene, and you've done with that thing, there's two and three a year now, so.
Just my idea, it's all the clerks do it.
I just wanted to add something.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes.
I know that through the emails we got, you also brought up the carts, but those are on wheels, so they can be used in other areas.
It's mobile, correct. That's the Microsoft, who's Surface Hub?
It's not just for that.
It's actually mobile.
Right, right.
And that's a key piece of our upgrade, but we can move that around.
Yeah.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on the item number 11? Here, now, I need a motion for number 11.
Motion to approve.
Second?
And roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor, who's this?
Yes, thank you. We are now going to the item number 12, which is the ordinance 2018-12, Land Development Code Amendment to Section 41.03 Stormwater. This is the second reading. The city attorney will read the ordinance, and then we're going to have a staff report.
Thank you. Ordinance number 2018-12, an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code of the City of Tarpon Springs as follows. Appendix A, Article 9, Section 141.03, Stormwater retrofit, allowing exemption for development, additional gross floor area over existing impervious surfaces, providing for modifications that may arise at public hearing, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the code of ordinances of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and providing for, and providing for the effective date of this ordinance. Uh, this is a second reading, uh, ordinance under 2018-12, published in the Tampa Bay Times on May 4th, 2018 and June 1st, 2018.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Heather Earlier, Planning and Zoning Director. Um, there's been no additional, um, information since first read and since we had a full presentation during that, I'll answer any questions that you may have, but there has not been any additional information.
Are there any commission comments or question? You know, are there any public comments on this item? You're none? I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor, who's this?
Yes, thank you. Item number 13 is the ordinance 2018-07 Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Coastal Element. This is the second reading. The city attorney will read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2018-07, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan by revising Section 3 existing land use data requirements, adding some paragraph 6, relocating some paragraph, sub-paragraph H from Section 6, revised in the goals, objectives and policies by clarifying policies 1.1.2 and 1.1.10, adding a new goal 2, providing rationale for the adding, excuse me, providing a rationale for the future land use map and moving the future land use categories from Section 6 to Goal 2, revising Goal 3 to incorporate density and intensity standards in the coastal high hazard area to be consistent with the countywide rules, renumbering all subsequent goals, objectives and policies, striking redundant sections and renumbering the subsections, subsequent sections to remove or correct outdated references, amending the coastal planning and conservation element by revising Policy 1.6.6 to modify the reference to the future land use element for preservation, for preservation and conservation of environmentally sensitive areas and deleting Policy 1.6.7, providing for correction of scrimmers errors, providing for other modifications that may arise from a view of this ordinance, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. It's been a first reading ordinance number 2018-07, published in the Tampa Bay Times on March 2nd and June 1st, 2018.
Thank you. Staff report.
Yeah, again, Mayor Commissioners, Heather Earlier, um, you're planning and zoning director and staff to this application. Uh, this is amendment that's essentially modifying both your future land use element and your coastal and conservation element. Um, essentially it's been, this is the second reading. Uh, af- after first reading, it was sent to the state for approval. Um, the state has sent back their approval. It was also sent to the county and the other state agencies. All the state agencies have responded with their approval and the county, and Ford Pinellas has responded that it is consistent with the countywide rules. All of the letters for that correspondence that's been received are in the backup to your, to your staff report for this. In the last 24 hours, staff has received, um, and been made aware of a, there's some concerns in the community. With that, staff has provided a written response to you in response to, um, the request from the city manager and you have that information as well. Um, with that, staff's going to make the following recommendations and changes, um, at moving forward based on the comments that have been received. So if you'll bear with me for a minute, I'm going to go through the backup to the exhibit, to the ordinance and discuss those changes that we're proposing at this time. So on page 1, Section 3, existing, uh, existing land use data requirement, Section B, future land use element is amended and to add the, and relocate sub-paragraph H of Section of 6, year 2025, future land use amendment and to revise the text as following. Staff is suggesting that the initial paragraph under Section 6 be struck. That's being actu- actually being proposed to be added and that the language that is shown in, um, cross-out be, um, no longer deleted and so it would remain in the comp plan that addresses some of the concerns the community has, um, with, uh, the proposed uh, language amendments. On page 2, under Section 5, future land use goals, um, objectives, policies and the future land use elements are amended, um, to add Goal 2, Objective 2.1, Policies 2.1.1, 2.1.2 and 2.1.3 as follows. The intention of this section was to bring your land use, um, categories actually in line with your policy language because at this point in time, it's not there. It's a separate entity that just resides at the rear portion of your, your comp plan. So to make it an integrated part of your comp plan, your policy language, that's what the intention of this goal was. The goal and objective don't seem to be in, um, dispute. However, the policy language at this time seems to have some, some residents concerned. So as a result, the, the staff is willing to, um, at this point, pull that language. So that would be Policy 2.1.1, 2.1.2 and 2.1.3. We'll come back with additional language in the future to address that concern. Essentially, the goal is still accomplishes what the staff is trying to do, which is in, integrate in those, um, land uses into the comp plan. So the goal and objective will do that. The policy language can be implemented later. Now, on page 6 is the next change that the staff is proposing. And essentially that is under Section 7 Conservation Goals, Objective Policies of the Coastal Area and Conservation Element is amended to revise Policy 6.1.6 and to remove Policy 6.1.7 as follows. Uh, staff is recommending that the policy language change that is proposed in Policy 1.6.6 is per, is, is, remains. However, the deletion of Policy 1.6.7 would no longer be deleted. It would remain in the comp plan in that element. Um, that would address an additional concern. The balance of the other changes are language that needs to be changed either for consistency or to clean up, um, the elements since we're going through this process to clean up your policy language at this time, that's, that's what we're asking to do. So staff is recommending approval with the modifications as outlined. And I can answer any questions that you have.
Might want to explain the process to what this is.
Sure. Um, with that, what's going to, what's going to have to happen is depending upon the outcome of this meeting and, and your opinions on the recommendations that staff's now providing to you kind of at the last minute, we would have to go through and modify this ordinance. So as a result of any, um, discussion that's had tonight in any direction, I'd ask for clear, as clear a direction as possible because my ad needs to go in the paper tomorrow morning in order for me to get on to your next commission meeting so that this can be resolved. I'm on a deadline for the consistency portion of this to be consistent with the countywide rules and I have projects coming behind this that need that consistency to happen. So while I don't mind removing the language that is in contention right now because it's not a part of the necessary component for me to meet the, the requirements that I need to meet for August, I am needing to still move forward on this, on the, the basic language here, especially with the coastal high hazard language and getting that implemented by my August deadline. So my recommendation at this point stands that we do that. I can get it, I can make the advertising deadline tomorrow morning. The ad will be in the paper on Saturday and we will hear this in, on this, your second meeting in June.
So again, we make the changes and come back to you for a second reading with those changes at the next meeting and you could, uh, address the issues with that. We just need to know before we advertise this, any others, so. That's what we're requesting to do. Um, if that's the will of the board to make those changes and again, advertise it, bring it back to the meeting, uh, with those changes.
And I can't answer any questions.
Again, explain to us, well, we cannot do it right the first time. Why we have to wait and do it twice?
What do you mean, why we can't do it right the first time? This is in response?
I mean, why can't we have it as a complete unit? Why we have to do it twice?
Because there's...
Why can't we do the modifications at once?
The reason why you can't do the modifications tonight is they're substantive. The way the ordinance is written, and your attorney can speak to this as well, the way that the, um, language is written is the, and, and, and the header is written there and it was advertised, is those sections are being deleted. It's a substantive change for us to now come back and say, we no longer want to delete those sections of our code if that's the, if that's what the, the majority of the board here wants to do tonight. It's a substantive enough change that we need to go back and advertise and wait the, the required 10 days for that advertisement to come back to you for, for hearing. That's the, the minimum that we have to wait to notice the public that there, that there has been a substantive change in the ordinance and go through that, that additional second reading.
Okay, thank you. Is any commission comment, question? Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you Heather for making these changes. I'll, I'll, I'll last minute, I know we passed this on first reading. I don't, I never put my best to be, uh, unenvironmentalist, so I depend upon many of those in the community that have this expertise to, to, uh, alert us when we need to have some changes. So I thank you for being responsive to those as well and correct, and, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, but also changing the part where things still come to us for review here on, here on the BOC.
Correct. That policy language that was the problem is that policy language that was alluding to those three policies. We will be adjusting that policy language. I think there's some misunderstanding there. There is no possible way for me as an, as a, as an administrator for your zoning and your comprehensive planning program to amend those without going to the state for review. The state requires those amendments. Now, I can consolidate those changes, um, to a one-time amendment that happens once a year, which is what the county does. The county does that once a year in both the county planning program and your countywide rules. They, they adjust those, those areas that they add into preservation as a result of all of the require, requests that each one of the communities comes. They do it for a reason to, it makes it easier for them. From our perspective, it would make it easier for us to do it that way because it would require us to look at our maps and touch our maps once a year. And that is something that needs to be happening on a more regular basis. So from my perspective, from an administration perspective, it's a better tool to consolidate those changes into a one-time amendment. However, right now, the way this language reads is those additional amendments would happen at the time of, of applications. When an applicant comes in, just like you see on a regular basis, the applicant changes the, ma- makes the change that they need to make to the land use and then they have the app, the site plan and all the other components fall in line with that and we synchronize those applications right now.
Thank you. Well, I, I do appreciate us preserving at least that, the, the, uh, the BOC's authority. As I said, we are the ones responsible in this, we're not, not, not staff when it comes to being responsible to the community. And, uh, I thank you for at least, I guess, I guess, I guess cleaning that, uh, language up. So thank you.
Let me shake it.
Thank you so much for, um, being, uh, working on this so quickly for us. I know this was last minute today and, um, but it is an important issue. Um, and I want to thank you for listening to our community and, um, and working with everybody. I think this is a better option. What you're proposing is a better option for us and I do like the idea that, um, as Vice Mayor said, um, that we make some of these decisions. It's our responsibility as an elected official to make some of these major decisions for our city, um, especially when it comes to environmental issues. Um, years ago, there was a code that we changed. I believe it was with the Planning and Zoning Director, remember that, Mark? That gave, that we took his authority away and we gave, we, the Board of Commissioners, the Board of Commissioners, um, took over that authority. Remember that?
Yeah, I don't remember the particular detail.
It was after the Walmart issue.
Yeah.
Or before, I'm not sure.
Remember that.
Yeah, so I, I, it was, it's very important that we, um, that we keep, keep that, you know, that we are the decision makers when it comes to the environment like that. So again, I appreciate, um, you last minute working on this for us and again, you know, we appreciate everything you do for us.
Well, again, this is going to be a, a stopgap measure. We will be coming back to, to, oh, address this section because there are some, from my opinion, technical problems with the way that this language is implemented in your comprehensive plan. There's language that belongs in your land development code and that just, the implementation never occurred. So there, there is some work to be done here, but in the short term, it's not absolutely necessary that it happened today or in the short term.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, thank you Heather. Uh, I understand that your intention with this ordinance is to, um, achieve consistency. And as you just said, I think some of this language belongs in our, our land development code. Um, thank you for meeting with me today because we went over all of this and, um, those three areas are areas that, um, I know some, some of our, uh, public had opposition with. Um, and we looked at, uh, changing that language and I, I, I do believe that, um, the first one where you're striking, um, this language should be kept in on the one that you mentioned on page, um, 1. And I'm not going to go repeat all of that, Section 6 and then, um, Page 2, um, 2.13 and 2.11, um, should be struck. And again, on Page 6, um, 1.67 should, uh, should not be struck. So, um, I think we should go ahead and, and modify this ordinance and, and, uh, so that you do meet your deadlines, um, that you have and come back and look at all this. And, and I know as a Planning and Zoning Director, you can't make changes to the land use, um, and that we have the, the final say on this and the state and the county and everybody else involved. So, uh, thank you for your work today and, and getting this change for us. Your recommendations anyway.
Thanks, Mayor. Can you just clarify for me so I have a better understanding? You've mentioned it a few times that you have a certain deadline to have items cleaned up inside our comp plan, right?
Sure. So what that's alluding to is, um, back in 16, the countywide rules were amended. As such, they gave us a window of time as a county to, or as a city to go through actually all the municipalities in this, to be consistent with the provisions that they changed. And so we did a portion of those provisional changes when we did your year-based amendments, but the coastal high hazard area was an area that we were not prepared to deal with until after we got through the year-based amendments. So that came later and that's the basis for this. The additional strike through and underlines that you see are just cleaning up agency names and changing outdated references to policies and statutes that no longer exist.
When is the deadline?
I believe it is August, um, 10th.
Of this year?
Of this year, yes, correct.
Is there more to do still?
No, this is the last, this is that last, the last piece.
Uh, just out of curiosity, you said there's some projects pending for this to be completed?
Correct. We have some annexations and land use changes that if we're, if we're not consistent with the countywide land use, we can't move forward with making those amendments and changes because when we send them to the county, the county, to Ford Pinellas for approval, they're going to kick them back to us and say that you need to finish your consistency requirements.
Okay. So annexations and...
Annexations, future land use amendments, any of those types of applications. And there are a few that are working their way slowly through the system.
Heather, thank you for addressing the concerns of the public and making these modifications. We now go into the public comments. Yes, Mayor?
I just have a question.
Sure.
Um, I could probably ask it from here.
No, 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 you have to come to the podium, please. And state your name and your address for the record, please. Thank you.
Patricia Borowick, and I'm at 2604 Oak Circle in Tarpon Springs. Most of what Heather dealt with right now is, those were things I had concerns about. So I'm delighted that, that it's going back to the drawing board. My question is, when will the revisions, the revised whole packets, uh, that she created before, when will those be available on the city's website so that the public again sees them and can respond?
That would be tomorrow, right?
Tomorrow? No.
It would be, it would be consistent with when your, when your packets are available. We certainly can provide them very quickly after tomorrow when I get the advert, the, the changes changed.
Advertise them.
But as far as on the, the packet availability, that would be usually when your packet is available, but we can provide those in the, in the Planning and Zoning Department. No one needs near wait, needs to wait in the Planning and Zoning stuff. We've put our packets together much in ahead of what your meetings are.
I think they're thinking about what you're going to advertise, which is the changes.
Sure. The changes will be included and so will the language be updated tomorrow.
But that'll be available tomorrow.
And we can make it available tomorrow to anyone who wants, whether it makes it to the website or they just call us individually, we'll get it on the website as soon as we can thereafter.
Now, because we have to advertise this, so it'll be ready, that portion of it, not the backup, but that'll be ready tomorrow and we'll post it or get it to anybody who can leave their card up there and their email address and we'll send it new language to them tomorrow. And again, we've got a public hearing when it comes up, there'll be a public hearing also, um, if there's anything to that. And then if you make some minor changes, the reason we have to do this because they're major, so if there's other little tweaks or something that doesn't do that, you can still do it at the public meeting the next time.
Do you have any other comments? Yes, then.
I'm Annie Samarcos, 1110 South Florida Avenue. For the record, and I don't know if anybody can answer this, but I, I know it's televised, recorded, I wish somebody would. What are the, specifically, what are the August projects that have deadlines? What are the, specifically, what are the August projects that have deadlines? If this ordinance wording hasn't been amended all these years, what's the hurry now for a newspaper advertisement tomorrow? To me, I think to a lot of us, we know it's a red flag. I'm shaking. You know, I love this town. So I feel like somebody's trying to fool us here. This has something to do with the Wawa. We all know about that, but that'll be coming out more and more. So no Wawa on the wetlands, okay? We have people working on that project. No Wawa on alternate 19. Maybe it belongs on Highway 19. I feel like we don't need to further destroy, we talk about the gateway signs into our community, why would we further destroy one of them in our historic town by putting a Wawa there on a wetland? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this item?
Hello. My name is Dory Larson. I live at 1846 Lexington Place in Tarpon. And I guess my concerns are just the comp plan is a statement of our city's vision. And most of the changes that I saw that I was concerned about were where we were cutting wetlands protection out of the comp plan. And hearing that there are going to be further adjustments, which I'm glad to hear, I just want to make sure that we're being transparent and that people can see all of the changes and all of the language further in advance because these are significant changes, in my opinion, that are worth taking the time. I'm not sure what the implication would be if we missed the deadline of August. I don't see why we would rush, rush, rush unless we're sure that these are the changes that we would like to see in our comp plan, which is, you know, an important guiding document to our community. And I just also am a little unsure about what, if we're talking about making language consistent, why major, the major significant portion of the changes were specifically to wetlands. That is my concern. And like I said, I would like to see the changes available so that we can all read them and understand them well in advance of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? You're none?
As I said, the language will be available tomorrow. And then there'll be two weeks where we're not dealing on less than 24 hours. There'll be two weeks to come in, talk, meet. It'll be ready because we have to advertise tomorrow. So we've got two weeks to come in, get your questions, look at what the new language is, and we'll go for there in two weeks.
Somebody's got it?
Tomorrow.
I'd also like to thank the public for their input and allow us to make these modifications. Thank you.
So legally, I'm setting the date and deferring it to next, or what's the?
There's no, it's not necessary to, I mean, I'm stating that we're going to do it for the next meeting, but it's not, we're not preserving an ad or anything. There's no really reason to do that other than we're doing that for us to make consistently this discussion addressed and move forward. But we'll be doing the advertising, as I said, tomorrow. It'll be available immediately.
And once again, the language that we're talking about is currently in your comprehensive plan. All that we're saying is we're going to no longer delete it, so.
I'd like to ask the city attorney what we should do to have a motion and defer it. And your suggestion is to defer it?
Yes, you can defer it to, it sounds like from the discussion to the next meeting.
The next meeting. So I need a motion to defer it to the next meeting?
Motion to defer.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Alhousas.
Yes, thank you. Next is item number 14, is the ordinance 2018-13, the application 18-37. Slater, annexation 1253 North Pinellas Avenue. This is the first reading.
Orderance?
The attorney, please read the ordinance.
Orderance number 2018-13, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, annexing lots 6, 7, 16, and 17, Block 11, Fairview Subdivision, as recorded in Plan Book 9, Page 18 of the Public Records of Pinellas County, Florida, less public rights-of-way and consisting of .52 acres, more or less, of real property located on North Pinellas Avenue in Section 1, Township 27, South Range 15 East, providing for findings and providing for an effective date. It's been a first reading of orderance number 2013. Second reading will be held on August 7, 2018. This ordinance was published in the Tempe Times on May 4, 2018.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Once again, Heather Oler, Planning and Zoning Director, staff to hear this application. Just to give you an update, on the hearing dates that are shown on your application, the second read has been moved from your meeting of June 26 to your August 7 meeting. And that's being done because there is a necessary requirement for us to also adjust, to have a zoning ordinance. It didn't make it into this annexation. So as a result, we're going to have to go back and get that to catch up so that when we go to second reading on August 7, we'll have all of the pieces together at that reading. So with that, this annexation is for essentially a half acre of property adjacent to a property that is already zoned ROG and with a zoning, rezone and being rezoned to RRO residential office. Essentially, Mr. Slater actually owns the adjacent piece of property. He purchased this prosperity, and he'd actually like this one to come in as well so that he can have both of these properties within the city limits. Essentially, at this particular point in time, the property is contiguous to the city limits, so it meets the tests for the annexation. It meets the minimum standards for the district. The property is developed with a single-family residence. The applicant owns the adjacent property to the north, which is already relocated in the city limits, and he is requesting this voluntary annexation. Essentially, the property, again, is contiguous. It's within our wastewater facilities service area. We can provide potable water to the site and fire protection to the site. It is consistent with the criteria of the comprehensive plan, and it is consistent with the future of the uses in the, both the future land use and the zoning district are consistent between the countywide land use and the city's land use with a few caveats. The zoning district, the reason why you're going, we're going to be moving forward with a zoning ordinance is RRO uses are slightly different. RRO category is actually a more transitional zoning district where it allows for a real mix between office and residential uses. The current county zoning on this piece of property only allows a residential as an accessory to some other use. So it's consistent with the design of the building that's existing on the property. It's consistent with the adjacent land use. So the staff is not concerned. The density-intensity standards between the county and the city's land use are the same. It's really just the use, allowed uses are slightly different. With that, the technical review team evaluated the project on April 12, 2018. They were, they had no comments or concerns with this moving forward. It was a complete application at that time. We have done the required notifications, and the staff is recommending approval of the requested for annexation and rezoning from P1 Pinellas County Zoning District to the RRO City of Tarpon Springs Zoning District. The land use will remain the same. The Planning and Zoning Board heard this application on May 21, 2018, and voted unanimously to recommend approval. At that meeting, we actually did have a resident that's adjacent to this property come in and speak in support. I don't know that he's here tonight, but to speak in support of Mr. Slater moving forward with bringing this particular property into the city. With that, I can answer any questions that you may have.
Any commission comments, question?
Got a question, Heather. I know there's a lot of properties in this area of Tarpon Springs that are unincorporated, and incorporated kind of creates a U around a lot of these properties. Is there a mechanism in place where we can incorporate an area, or does each property owner have to come in and request annexation and pay the $500 advertisement fee?
So it's both. It's one and the same, really. A group of property owners can come in and request to be annexed in at the same time. Obviously, that would be ideal because then we can address it as a unit coming in. But an individual property owner can do that same thing. So really, it's ideal when you can have that situation where a group of property owners want to come in, but it's not necessarily mandatory the way that the state statute's written.
What if, like, from the city's standpoint, the city's like, well, why don't we go ahead and annex in these properties?
The city, there are two different types of annexation. There's voluntary annexation and involuntary annexation. If the city chooses to do, to annex in a group of parcels, that falls under a different set of requirements at the state for an involuntary annexation. But it's not that the city can't do that. It's just a different, it's a slightly different process.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions?
No questions. Are there any public comments on this item? You're none. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Alhousas.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Major Young is next. Item number 15, the ordinance 2018-14, amend the special slow speed, minimal wake zone, and special idle speed, no wake zones on Anclot River. This is the first reading. Actually, this is just a section.
What was that, sir?
This is just a section. The city attorney, would you please read the ordinance?
Orderance number 2018-14, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending Chapter 5 Boat Stocks and Waterways, Article 1 in general, by adding a new section entitled Sections 5-7.1, establishment of special slow speed minimal wake zones and special idle speed no wake zones on the Anclot River, providing for appeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances and conflict herewith, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the Code of Ordnances of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and providing for the effective date of this ordinance. It's been a first reading ordinance, 2018-14. The second reading will be held on June 26, 2018. This was published in the Tempe Times on May 25 and June 1, 2018.
Major Young.
Mr. Mayor, again, we're bringing this one back as amendment to one we brought in 2017, 32 with the board. Patrick and I have been working with the state on this. Most of this is just language changes. It's just context changes within the ordinance. We're not changing the content of the ordinance. Still looking at those same areas that were addressed in the commission meeting back in late '17. We did go through the review process, ordinance review process with the state, went through their 21-day review online. No appeals to that. We're just bringing this forward now as a final product to be voted on by the commission. Then we would send it, once the second reading's completed and you adopt this new ordinance, we would send this through the permitting process.
Thank you for your hard work to make this happen.
Thanks for having Patrick help me.
Comments or questions? Any commission comments? Are there any public comments on this item?
Dory Larson, 1846 Lexington Place. I just, I guess a question, more about the enforcement of it, just to make sure that we are enforcing if we are going to put this ordinance and expand it. Because people just rip through near the yacht club already where it's a no-wake zone. I'm just making sure that we're keeping up with the enforcement of it as well.
We work on enforcement efforts on a daily basis with FWC, Sheriff's Office, and other jurisdictions through this area. We recently did receive some vessels of our own that we can look into lower-lying areas and so forth for enforcement and helping, you know, in those areas. But most of it's going to be done through FWC on the main parts of the channel, and they're running outside the channel, and we get those complaints periodically. And Major Young with the Sheriff's Office, or correction, with FWC is working on that process with us on a daily basis, along with Captain Navarro with FWC and other agencies.
Again, thank you. Any other public comment? You're none. I need a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Alhousas?
Yes. Next is Resolution 2018-11, Budget Resolution, and the city attorney will read the resolution.
Resolution 2018-11, a resolution to the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida. The following amendments are made to the fiscal year budget of 2017, 2018. It's been a reading of the Resolution 2018-11.
Staff report, Mr. Herring.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Ron Herring, Finance Director. The purpose of Budget Resolution 2018-11 is to budget for items that have come up during the year that have previously, you know, have not been budgeted for. And I've tried to summarize them in the front cover letter. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to go over them.
Okay. Any questions?
Pretty clear.
Commissioner Carr, you have a question?
No, it was pretty clear.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are there any public comments on this item? You're none. Thank you. I need a motion?
Motion to approve.
And roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Alhousas?
Yes, thank you. Now, we're going to the item number 17. This is a discussion item, extension of vulture and pedestrian bicycle trail to the beaches. It was requested by Commissioner Carr. This is actually two different items to discuss. Start with you, Commissioner Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there one that you would like to discuss first versus another?
Well, you, go ahead.
Okay. The first one I would like to talk about is the pedestrian bike trail from, it's more of like a pathway, bike trail, boardwalk, something that we could continue off Craig Park. We brought it up in the past about addressing the boulders that are along South Spring Boulevard from Craig Park, the boat ramp, to Martin Luther King Bridge. And then they also go around parts of Woodcomb Bayou. That was done to solidify the shoreline, but never showed up to the commission to actually approve or anything along those lines. It's created a dangerous situation. But I think we have an opportunity here to continue what we have in Craig Park, which is beautiful, where we have a lot of people that come from the neighborhoods and a lot of people that drive in from other parts of Tarpon Springs and the community, the surrounding communities, to walk the bayous and actually enjoy some of the shoreline that's publicly, public space. To be able to connect Craig Park to the beaches is something that I think would be ideal. Currently, today, there's breaks in the sidewalks between the two. And if we're able to add wider sidewalks, a pathway of some sort, it's going to create a safer environment. It's going to aesthetically, I think, look better. And then also it will encourage more visitors to visit Tarpon Springs and also encourage additional residents to get out in a safer ability to walk, run, or bike along these areas. I would like to ask the city manager to continue to look at some options for this, and I wanted to bring it up to the rest of the board. I do know that with the pool, that was a recreation mechanism that was recently canceled by the board, and that there would be some funds somewhere in that area in the coming budgets to potentially have a starting point of looking at the design, keeping it within the recreation mindset for the residents. And then the other, the next part is saying, would you put it on the bayou side, or would you put it on the, across the roadside? And I think it would be interesting to have a conversation about that because you could have something that protects the shoreline, especially in the county portion of the road, that's similar to Spring Bayou where you have a seawall, and you know you're not going to lose that seawall to future erosion that we've seen around the bayous for many, many years. Again, I believe there's a safety concern, especially along South Spring Boulevard, and then also out to the beaches. So I wanted to bring this up to the commission. I think it's a good idea. I know a lot of people have expressed information or expressed interest in the community about it, and I think it's good for us to at least talk about it and put it on some type of planning portion.
Yes, I know we've talked about this for a while, and this has been brought up to Bob Robertson, who has looked at options. We've looked at making that one section of South Spring one-way so that we can have room for public biking and for walking. But I know that Bob is still working on this. And as far as, you know, I live on that street, so I see it every day. As far as the sidewalks, there's a large portion where there are no sidewalks that we would have to add. But residents own those properties, so, you know, I guess we would have to investigate whether those residents would be willing to give us the rights to those, to their properties and remove trees and those kinds of things to put the sidewalk on their properties on the other side. We've talked about putting something over the rocks, but then there was a mention of needing a railing, which I think most residents on South Spring would disapprove of. So, yeah, it's something I would love to see, too. I thought the one-way idea from MLK- I thought the one-way idea from MLK to all the way to Banana would have given us the room to do something for pedestrian and bicycle traffic and make it safer, because with two cars, a boat trailer, and people running and biking on South Spring, it's a dangerous situation, and especially if we have an event and cars are parked all the way down South Spring, like for the fine art event. So again, I think we need to talk about this with, with Bob and see his study and what the results are from that study that he was doing, which we haven't heard. I'd like to hear something back from that, from that study, as far as the one-way and our options that we were talking about to look at.
Well, before anybody, let me tell you where we left, we left off with the one-way thing is I predicted, because I went through this before, that the residents were not going to like it. So, and I knew because many, many years ago, they went ballistic over the plan, and I knew they were going to go again. So, so to me, and we'll get the other part later, that is one of the few viable options to get everything you want with bike and pedestrian. It's not a good, I'm not saying it's a good option, but it's viable. So after that, and we kind of saw that wasn't going to go, he's been working to solidify all of the other options, and there's a bunch of them. And he should be ready, he's back from vacation next week. So I, so I would say after Monday each year, you should make an appointment with Bob Robertson, because it's rather lengthy, all the options, to make an appointment with him and go over all those options where they are. I can tell you, I'm not sure any of them are workable. I can tell you, a lot of them were done with the possibility of getting permitted, but even though our engineer, who did somebody's designs and thought it could meet it, I don't think when it goes to the approval process of the Army Corps, I don't think they're going to approve them. I may be wrong, but again, there's many, many options. When he comes, he's got them all after that. We can always go to the other side and finish those sidewalks, but I just ask you to go ride and see those homes. We have to figure out if we have right-of-way there, and we're going to make some disruptions in people's yards, but we may have to do that and stuff. But that's one of the options he'll tell you about, but there's probably eight, seven, eight, nine options. But I think everybody should meet with him individually to get all those things, and then it comes either to a work session or to something else, and we discuss them. But, you know, after he gets back from his vacation next week, I encourage everybody to go and see where we are with that, and then we'll have, you know, once you update it, then we need to sit and talk about it in a, in a public forum and see where we're going to go on it.
Do you know if Bob's made contact with the Army Corps as far as the other side and doing something with that side?
Oh, yeah. We, oh, our engineer, we got from our, our consultant engineer is working closely with them. But remember, the Army Corps will tell you, yes, will viable, and we will look at it, and yes, we will look at it. You've seen memos before saying, they'll do this, and they said, the Army Corps will only tell you they will look at it. They'll tell you when they absolutely won't, but just because they tell you they're going to look at it when it comes in for permitting, there's no guarantee, and I can tell you some of those plans that they said, go ahead and put it together and bring to me. I can absolutely, if I was a betting man, bet the money that they're going to disapprove them. But he'll tell you that because he kind of can gauge them and stuff, and again, it's long and complicated, so I think each year you should be filled in individually, and then we need to collectively get together and see where we're going. As far as the trail to the beach, I can tell you, and I had Tom Function check, because he's been working with the county, with our own former Rodney Chapman, who, who does different bikeways. There's always been and still was four ways you can do the bike trail and go out to the beaches. The one's eliminated, that's the yacht club bridge, that way, they've already eliminated that, that's not a viable option. I can tell you, they haven't eliminated it yet, but again, and I've been involved with this thing for six or seven years about this trailer stuff, I don't see any way they can do it around Wickham, because not only do you have these shoreline problems on the other side, the county, there's a tremendous utilities, all the utilities are on the opposite side of the road. So while they wouldn't tell us when Tom updated, have you eliminated that? They said, no, we haven't eliminated yet, but there's serious challenges. The only other two, and the one I think is most viable, it's not going to be one maybe everybody likes, but I think the most viable one is mirrors. That's not the best, but I think that may be the most viable. Obviously, the other one's closterman. Those are the four. A long time ago, it's been a plan to identify from the trail to get out to the beaches. The county is still looking at all those options, but I can tell you, my prediction, and I believe that Wickham's going to be eliminated, because you just can't adjust. They've got a tremendous amount of money they've got to spend and do to do their shoreline, which, you know, we only go beyond that point, and that's theirs, that shoreline's, that shoreline's in deep trouble. There's no way they're going to put it on that side, and because of all the county utilities and utilities on the other side, I don't think. But again, they still are looking at those three options, and they have said they'll work with the city and our preferences and stuff, but unfortunately, when it gets down to more work and a bunch of stuff, I think, you know, mirrors is going to be the most viable option. But again, it's early, and they're still looking, and they know our number one choice would be obviously going the straight route, Wickham Gulf and out to the beach, that center of town, you know, most, but I'm just not sure that's going to be viable. But they, but we confirmed that they're still working, they're still looking at that as part of their trails, but we don't have anything of now, but they're still working on it. And that's the update I got as of today with them and, and that plan. And obviously, whatever we do needs to coincide with what they decide to do, because the major portion of the work is county work, so.
Vice Mayor Banther? Yes, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Carr, for bringing this up. I don't do cardio, obviously, but I think it's important to provide safe venues for those that wish, and a lot of people here do. I'm for anything that's feasible, being the key word, to get the bikers off the road, because when I'm driving and I can't, you can't pass on the bayou, at least legally, and it's, you know, it's, it's a safety challenge for them, and it slows traffic down. So, you know, I don't, I mean, obviously, I don't, I don't really know. We'll have to see what comes back to us about Spring Bayou and Wickham Bayou. You know, I know when the one-way was proposed, the residents got pretty upset. I don't live there, so it's, you know, it's their opinion. But I do, right off the top of my head, before Mark mentioned it, I thought about mirrors as far as coming off the trail. So that might be an option as well, but I'm for whoever gets the bikers off the road, because it's, it's, it's an accident waiting to happen. They can still choose to ride on the road, but I would assume if they had a safe option not to, that they would not ride on the road unless they're training for a triathlon. So, yeah, I think we should investigate what's feasible and put that into some kind of a plan, because a lot of people do bike and walk and whatnot, and they need a safe place to do it, and our roads certainly are not the safe place to do it, so.
Could I, yeah, could I just make a comment? I agree with you with the bikers, but there's so many pedestrians and runners on that road, and I see children and runners and pedestrians in that section of South Spring where there's no sidewalk, and that is very dangerous, so.
Thank you. You know, I have to agree with some of my commissioners here, Vice Mayor. South Spring and Wickham Bayou are very dangerous. I don't honestly see how we could share the road with bikers or walkers on those two roads. I think, my opinion is mirrors when, when that, because I know there were some plans for mirrors, and I, you know, it's been a slow time coming, but I think the trail ends right there at mirrors, and taking mirrors, taking mirrors down to Florida, to the beaches, is going to be the best option. There's room there to add sidewalks wherever they need to be added, or the bike lane, you know, a shareable road. I think that's going to be the best option. I know that the survey that was put out was not a big hit in town. And that, I think that could have been a great option, maybe, you know, around South Spring, sharing the roadway and make it, but it just didn't fly here in our community. So we need to find another option, and Mr. Robertson, I know, is working on it, and I think, good idea, Mark. I think we should all meet with him, or then maybe have a work session after that at the end of the summer, and, and come up with some other options. But thank you for bringing this up.
Mr. Carr, I want to thank you for bringing this forward. This is a very important issue to many people in the area, and we, this is something that we really need to provide to the residents and to our visitors. You have sidewalks, especially on South Spring Boulevard, it's not very, very unsafe. I've walked that area a lot, I drive that area a lot, and I know Commissioner Seber lives there, so you get to witness that all day long. We need to, let's wait and see what Mr. Bob Robinson comes up with, and see what options he can give us. And, but we need to provide some kind of sidewalk there. In regards to the bicycle trail, let's look at all the options that we have, but we also need to work with the county, because the shoreline needs to be restored right on the Wickham Boulevard. It's getting to a point now that many of the trees are about ready to fall in the water, so we need, we need to work with that, and I will be calling the city, you know, the county commissioner and talk to him again. I think we're scheduled to have lunch together in a week or two, so we're going to be talking about that.
I've reached out to the county commissioners. I do it every couple of times a year, just to refresh the memory that there's a need there, and I think it's good for all of our commissioners and the mayor to continue to express the needs and to remind them that we have sidewalks and issues that need to be addressed on the county roads throughout Tarpon Springs, because there is areas that really do need to be addressed that the county has for section over. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. You also have another part, the extension of Belcher, if you want to talk about that.
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much, Mayor, for giving me the time to talk about this. I do want to bring up a few issues. One of the things that I have continued getting complaints about from residents, and when I walked, was the traffic on Ultra nineteen. When I was in high school, I wasn't allowed to drive on US nineteen. I had to drive Ultra nineteen because of the, how dangerous it is. My parents said, you're allowed to drive, but you're not allowed to drive on US nineteen. Just fine, I understand. But it just does prove a point that US nineteen is a dangerous road, and we have a lot of residents that come back into Tarpon Springs, and our town has grown tremendously over the past few years from our development at Bay Shore Heights, the senior housing at Martin Luther King Junior in Safford, the apartments that are planning on going in at mirrors and Ultra nineteen, the potential redevelopment of Winn Dixie, the old Winn Dixie property, to be something different, and then all the other houses that have been built in Tarpon as well. So with the continuing growing business environment we're seeing, I think it's a time to bring up and at least have some discussions about what options could look like. I spoke with Witt, who's the director of Ford Pinellas, and he did say that he could come and help the city with a planning process or help out with designs for the trail that I mentioned that we just spoke about, and potentially extending Belcher north to mirrors. I just want to bring up a couple ideas in this public forum, just to, thinking about the residents that are currently on Distin today. Today, they've got a lot of traffic that cuts through their neighborhood, that goes up across Closterman, through Distin, to Curly Place, and then Ultra nineteen. And then we sit on Ultra nineteen, it's backed up the Closterman daily, sometimes it's backed up to the county reclaimed water plant south of Closterman. And then Closterman backs up pretty bad towards Oakley Village, especially during season. Again, daily nineteen is backed up to Closterman a lot of days, and when you get in the season, it gets really bad. I would like to just talk about this. One of the things I, because I drive it often, and I look at it, and I think about how do we respect the residents that are trying to get to their homes further in the city, but then how do we be good neighbors and respect people that live on these houses as well? I would like to bring up an example. If you travel south in Dunedin, south of Curly Road, right across from the golf course, you could see that Ultra nineteen runs south, and then you have houses that sit right on Ultra nineteen. But there's a frontage road that's, I believe, one-way, and so it gives the houses an opportunity to back out of their driveway on a safe, slow street, and the Ultra nineteen still moves the traffic south, and these houses still sit on Ultra nineteen. There's a lot of right-of-way in this area, so if we're going to talk about this and look at it for the future, with potentially the apartments coming in and mirrors connecting to nineteen, and having maybe this plan not too long after that, that it would still give the homeowners that might have kids an area to play in the street that's not actually in a busy road like Belcher, and then also when they back out of their houses, it gives them a safe area to back into. I want to bring it up as a commission, because I think it's an important part. One, for evacuation, that was brought up about hurricanes and other safety evacuation routes throughout the city. Two, Belcher seems to be a safer road than nineteen. Three, Ultra nineteen's just really, really bad traffic backed up right now. And then the fourth one was emergency response times. I know in the Oakley Village areas and other parts of the south part of town, that if a fire truck needed to come to rescue for an emergency, or a police officer had to respond from the public safety building, you would have to go down nineteen, or down Ultra nineteen through Tarpon Avenue, and you're looking at adding a few minutes. And, and then response time, we know a few minutes is critical, like we learned when we went through the fire ops course. So I just want to bring this up as a board. I think it's an important part to address and get just the mindset on looking at the design phase, and I'm not trying to get commissioners to say yea or nay tonight, to do the, to do the project, it's more of a yea or nay, let's look at a design mechanism to see what it could look like, to pull this forward.
Vice Mayor Banther? Yes, thank you. I've always been interested in, I guess we'd say, we'd say extending Distin, but Belcher, not Belcher, right? We don't, we have no children for Belcher, but Distin we do. My office is at Distin and Tarpon Avenue. It'd be really nice to have that open, but that being said, I don't, I don't live along there. I'm sure, you know, they might have some opinions there. I did own a villa back there in the woods that has a security gate that backs up our distant dead ends, and, and, and I lived, I lived in the front of the community, but I still would want it to extend when I lived there. So if it's feasible, who owns, do we own that land, or is that habitat between us, between where Distin ends and where, what's it, Mango, what's it, no, between, but between the two distance, that property?
I think we only got a couple lot.
But is, but is it habitat that owns the rest?
Yes, but that whole thing is in a.
Oh, that's one's a legal battle?
Yeah.
Oh, damn. I might, never mind. That's, yeah, that could be problematic. It'll, it'll resolve one day, I guess, but I did, I did hear about that, but we have to get control of that property and extend it. I mean, I'm, I'm all for looking at it, it makes perfect sense. That being said, I want, I want, I want to be respectful for those that live along those areas, and, you know, and I think we have one gentleman out there that emailed us a lot, if I'm not mistaken. So if we can figure out a way to obtain the property, afford to extend Distin, put in all the requirements that we'd have to have by extending Distin, and then have a workshop with the surrounding communities, we could maybe, maybe pull it off. There's no reason to say not to, it's just, I think there's a lot of hurdles to go through to get it done, but certainly it's an attractive idea, I guess, unless you're living right off Distin there. Commissioner Kita?
Thank you. Speaking of living off Distin, I did live in a house on Distin Avenue. The traffic is horrendous on that road. It's very dangerous. You're talking about a major road going through a development, is the way I look at it, only because I lived there, and I do currently live in Oakley Village, but I live on the other side now. So I know years ago, growing up, that's where we moved to is Oakley, our house was built there, and there was a fight, a long battle that went on about opening that road through. The community had quite a battle over it, and they did not want it. So personally, I think if it's something we even think to consider, I would definitely want a meeting with the Homeowners Association of Oakley Village and the Woods, because I, and I think it's important to include them to see how they feel about it. Feelings may change over the years, I'm not sure, but like I said, I lived on that road two years ago, and it's, and we do get emails from one of our residents. I know that we have a, I don't know what you call it, the dummy police car thing out there. I don't know what they call it, but that's out there quite a bit to try and slow traffic down, because it was just there, and they just moved around the corner to.
Curly Place.
Curly, so he's there now, so.
Around.
I'm sorry, I'm giving up your spots. But, so they're there a lot. I've been, I've experienced some of our police officers out there with a gun, not.
Gun?
You know.
Laser.
Yeah, the taser gun, whatever, the laser gun, you know, stopping people. I mean, they've had lines and lines of people, so the speed is definitely a problem on that road. I know that there was traffic studies done, we pulled from those, the signs that, you know, give your speed.
Speed indicator.
Yeah, there was, there was some, years ago, there was some studies done on that, or you pulled the speeds off of that or something. So, so obviously, there's an issue on Distin Avenue. I think may, you know, maybe once mirrors is put through, because mirrors is supposed to be from nineteen to the beach to Florida Avenue, and that's supposed to be an evacuation route. supposed to be an evacuation route. That's what it's meant to be. So there's our evacuation, an additional evacuation route there. Um, I think if the fire or the police had, uh, response time issues, they would, you know, and I've talked to them about response times and they're very happy with their response times right now. Um, not saying that they can never, you know, never be improved, but, um, they're, they're okay with their response times. So again, if we were to even consider this option, I would request meetings with, um, the homeowners associations of both developments there, um, as well as, um, the surrounding communities. And again, possibly wait till Mears is put through till we spend any money on design and, and all that. Just, just my thoughts. Like I said, I live there and, uh, it's a dangerous road with speed right now. And I know it's been asked to put speed bumps and stuff, but that's not viable either, so. Your opinion, Mark?
Well, again, I, I want to say that, and most of you, I knew you probably when you were a commissioner and you, the last, I mean, again, and as I told Commissioner Carr, the policy has always been, and my direction has always been, that we wait to get mirrors done and through, which I can't even give you, is it gonna be the year, is it gonna be two years, is it gonna be five years? I still, until we know what's going on with the development, don't know. Um, one of the reasons is, one of the other reasons is you gotta remember with our road money, with Spruce Street, a major project, and with that drainage on our, because remember, we have to do a portion of mirrors, the portion from Distin to US 19. That cost is gonna not. I can tell you now, all of our road money and everything is, is pretty much committed right now. But again, to even decide, you know, what that intersection is gonna look at, the direction was always, let's get mirrors in and through. And then again, we do guarantee you, because I went through the last one, have to do a long public process, because not only that, but the African-American community was not happy about that. It wasn't just Oakleaf, it was the African-American community.
Union Academy neighborhood needs to be involved in this.
So there will have to be extension and working with it. And of course, when mirrors get through and we realize, um, that, that was just the direction I've always gotten. Again, I wish I could give you a timetable on mirrors. Mirrors should have been done three, four, or five years ago. Um, I hope they're working through the processes. So hopefully with the next six months, I'm gonna know where they are, um, and maybe give you some idea and how we plan and where we need to put in the budget for the different things to do. But again, it does have to have an extensive public process to go through before we, we do anything. It's just when do you, when do you start that process? Um, because that's gonna be long and rather in detail than depth too, so it's just a timing when you start that process.
Thank you.
Commissioner K.
Yeah, I, I definitely, uh, understand what you're saying, Commissioner. Um, I take Curly Place to Distin myself all the time, especially in the mornings, um, taking Maggie to school, but I know that that neighborhood has had problems with speeding, uh, on Distin, and we get the emails and the complaints, uh, so making that a, a major thoroughfare, we would definitely have to meet with, with those residents and, and work that out. You talked about some type of frontage roads. I wasn't quite sure what you meant by that. Did you mean like off of Distin?
Yeah, so it'd be like you have Distin that would be a north and southbound lane, but then you actually have a one-way road that goes in front of the houses that would allow the houses to back out into that road, so that the speed wouldn't be going right in front of their house, and then it gives them the ability to back out onto that road and then travel at a safe rate, or if you had kids or something. And then you could even do landscape buffers in between the frontage road and the Distin traffic going north and south as well.
Do you think there's room there for frontage road?
Pretty wide space there, but, I mean, I, I travel it often, so that, I've put a lot of thought behind this. And again, it would address the speed also that a lot of the residents are dealing with right now. Um, and we could look at a curved road or something that could mitigate some of these issues that are problematic today with their current residents.
I think the speed is not only a, a, a problem on Distin, but Curly Place, since people are taking, taking Curly Place to Distin and, and there's, there's, you know, I, I go that way, um, almost every day, so I, I see the, the police car. Um, but I, I also think that we need to get mirrors done before we can look at that. Um, as much as that would be a great idea, um, I think that we need to focus on spending the money on mirrors because that's gonna be a major thoroughfare and, and also an evacuation route, and, and we need to focus on that first. Uh, but before we did anything, we definitely would need to meet with those neighbors in those neighborhoods and, um, talk to all of them. But thank you.
Commissioner Carr, again, thank you for bringing this forward. I think it, and bringing those, all these ideas for discussion, I think is great. But I did agree with, uh, Commissioner Kikta, who actually lived in the area and she experienced all the difficulties that they have, how bad it is, traffic, as it is now. And if, um, and I agree that we should wait to, um, to the extension of mirrors and see how that's going to work out. And that way we don't have to, uh, spend, uh, designing and all the other money twice. Let's just wait for that and, um, it's def, we definitely have to get the residents involved and let them know what we're going to do and what kind of input we're gonna get from them, because they are very, very concerned. I've been getting emails from, from the residents, especially one person there, almost every week.
Or fifteen a year.
He's so concerned the way it is now with the traffic that we have on Distin Avenue. And I can imagine if we cut it through, how much traffic that's going to generate. So it's gonna make it a bit difficult, knowing that it's going through the neighborhood. And we have several neighborhoods that they're going to be affected by, so we need to have those people involved in a decision.
I, I agree. I, I'm not trying to do this like in the back rooms and get something done, so...
No, 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 that's not what I'm talking about.
It's, um, I think what I wanted to bring up though is, there's an opportunity to, to look at a design mechanism to see potentially what it could look like, to present to the residents and say, this is what it could look like. Um, we know you have speeding issues in this road today, um, and if we wait to do, to look at or at least start brainstorming any ideas, if Distin is, or I'm sorry, if mirrors is three years away, um, and then we look at another couple of years of design, we're looking at maybe a ten years before we see a potential of bringing this forward. So I, I'm just talking about, let's just put some stuff on paper, let's talk to the community about it, let's get it, some ideas to show this is how we can control maybe the speed on Distin today, because that's not gonna go away unless we shut Distin down. And I don't think that's our intent right now, to shut Distin down. Um, but that needs to be addressed. Like, I think three of you have mentioned today that, uh, the speed is a bad situation on Distin. So how are we gonna address it and what are our steps to address that today other than putting the police dummy out and taxing our police force on it? Um, I, I'm just saying, there might be a proactive opportunity here to look at if mirrors is planning on going through. Just to, just to, let's look at it and talk about it to say, here are some options. I'm not saying we have to get a lot of money involved here, but Ford Pinellas is willing to get involved with it. And, um, I understand the concerns. I want to respect all the communities in that area as well, so.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this, on this discussion? You know, do you have any other, uh?
I just want to comment. Uh, I like Ford Pinellas. We deal with them on the PSTA, but they do, I'm, I'm, I think I have the right, uh, uh, organization in mind. There, there's so many acronyms down there. But they have some plans for transit in North County that are absolutely horrible. Not saying it would be for Distin, but just, you know, just take them with a grain of salt. But they're a good organization, but I, I just would be careful about their transit plans. Just look at everything individually. Don't let them just bombard you because they, they have some very unique ideas.
Thank you. And again, thank you for that. If there's no comments or questions, that concludes the regulation agenda. And we go to the staff comments. Police Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, by the way, it's, uh, Police Madigan, not the police dummy.
I didn't know what to call him.
Madigan. No dummies. No, no, there's no dummies in the police department, I'm sorry.
No comments, Mayor.
I just speed right past. I don't even...
I know it's there.
He waved to.
No, no, I'm sorry, Mayor, no comments.
Comments, okay. City Attorney, Patrick Perez, thank you for being here tonight.
Always a pleasure. I have no comments.
Okay. Mr. LeCure?
I know some of you have got calls already, or you'll be getting calls tomorrow about the hospital meeting with you about a open discussion on the lease issue. Um, the timeframe that they're gonna talk to you about is very tight because they wanna get this item on the referendum, and we have till August nineteenth. But, but, uh, what it is, is you'd have to hear, you'd have to hear about this last meeting of July and the first meeting of August to meet that deadline. So there's a rather timeline, but it's that, so they're gonna be meeting with you individually this week. Um, after they meet with you, I've told them, we need to have a workshop, um, where all you could collectively discuss this, because this will probably be as an important issue as you deal with, um, dealing with this leak. They have requested June twenty-first, which is a Thursday, an alternate date they had available is, is the nineteenth. Um, by that time, again, they'll be meeting with all of you within the next week. Um, if you could look and give me some direction, it'd be, it'd be, again, a work session between us and the hospital. They would go over with you as a group, everything they went over with you individually, and then we'd work to try to come to consensus with what that language would be, if we're gonna bring forward the language on the adjustment of the lease. Um, with that timetable, if we can get that work session that week of the eighteenth on one of those dates, um, we'll be on track to get the attorneys, both attorneys, working on what we're gonna bring forward. And then, of course, we have the public hearing process, the two meetings of, of what we wanna put on the ballot and put on the agenda and stuff. So is the twenty-first, um, viable for everybody?
Okay. I'm okay.
Now he's in June. You're talking about this, like, next week, right?
The week after.
The twenty-first of June?
Oh, next week, yeah.
That's a Thursday.
Yeah.
Thursday?
Yes, Thursday, June twenty-first.
Next Thursday.
Yeah.
What time?
Six-thirty or whatever, you know, whatever.
Don't make it early, make it...
Okay, six-thirty?
Six-thirty, just like we normally do.
Okay.
Six-thirty.
Okay.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, do you have any comments?
I have no comment.
Vice Mayor Panther?
Yes, thank you. I got to spend two weeks in Blue Ridge, Georgia, which is my dad's hometown and, like, I love to go visiting. And they did, this is way up in the hills. I'm sure a lot of you've been there at, at one point. But they actually have like these artistic fish-looking, like the little tarpins we looked at tonight, little fish-looking statue monuments around town. I have no clue why, because, well, there's lakes there, I guess, but they really, you know...
It's not a tarpon, is it?
I, no, I don't think there's tarpon up there in those lakes. Probably, I got a mouthful of lake water I'm still trying to get over, when my buddy, though, though, you know, he just pushed me off the boat. It was very bad. But, um, yeah, so it's neat to see what, 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 what other towns do. And, um, yeah, I just was, found it, found it funny that this mountain town had all these fish monuments everywhere. So, uh, but I'm happy to be back and ready for our summer workshops and all that summer brings for Tarpon Springs.
No, I don't have any comments, but you know who lives in Blue Ridge? I love Blue Ridge, is our former city attorney, Mr. Yakavon.
At half, you go there, every other car is a Pinellas company.
Yeah, he's, he's got, it's beautiful. It's a beautiful area. But no, I have no comments.
That's a halfway then, I guess, huh?
Yeah.
Commissioner Seaver?
No comments.
Commissioner Carr?
A couple of comments. I attended a workshop that was actually Ford Pinellas County Workshop about Oliver Passes on nineteen. Uh, I know I wasn't the one vote that was for, with look at it on nineteen and Tarpon Avenue. I didn't bring that up during the workshop. I just said, um, I just listened and asked about safety concerns on nineteen. Um, it was pretty interesting. Uh, the county commissioner was there and a lot of residents showed up from all over the area. Uh, there's some really unique plans and some, some really cool ideas, I think, that they had overall for nineteen and the future of nineteen, uh, south of Tarpon Springs. Uh, one thing I, I want to touch base with the market is, you mentioned that, that is the hospital trying to get this on the November ballot? Is that what the goal is?
Yes.
Okay. We do have a March ballot also, right? That's coming up?
Yeah.
Okay. So that five months difference, um, is there, was there been any discussions about that or bringing that up at all?
Uh, they'll discuss that with you. A lot of it is, and they'll tell you about the reason for, uh, what they want to do, which involves improvements to the hospital and how they wanna get on them. So that's what they'll be talking to you about in the meetings, and then we'll talk about. There's a reason why they wanna get November as opposed to, to the March, so.
Okay. Um, can you have someone reach out to them that had, take their Christmas lights down too, please? They've got their Christmas tree lit up still from our, uh...
That is a year-round, I think.
It does?
Yeah. It shouldn't be...
No, no, this is on the tree out by the road. It still has a star up on it and it's Christmas lights. So remember our event that they had out there?
Yeah, yeah.
So they're, I don't know if they're waiting, they do Christmas in July or something, I'm not really sure, but, um, it's just kind of funny that it's still there. Uh, and then for just, I, I suppose I didn't get clarification necessarily on the miscellaneous item that we spoke on. Um, was that, that we need to look at mirrors, once mirrors comes through, or do we wanna, where do we stand with these two items? Should we follow up on this at a later time? I'm not sure. I, I just...
If you will listen to all the remarks, it seems like everybody had almost the same opinion. In, in regards to the bicycle and to the pedestrian, let's wait and see what, uh, Mr. Robbins has to, uh, uh, what options he's gonna bring to us, and then we'll discuss that. And, uh, in regards to the, um, Distin is, let's wait till after mirrors, and then we'll look at it again.
Okay.
Although I say, like, the idea of the right, I need to do up like the right-of-way for your plan or the roadway and stuff, looking at what right-of-way, what is the power line right-of-way and what's that. I, I need to look at that for, so there are some things I can, I can, I can be looking at, because that's an interesting concept with, with the auxiliary road and stuff. I just don't know what we have in there, so I'll look into that and get back with you and talk with you about, about that portion, because that's an interesting idea, what we can do.
Okay, thanks.
And again, there may be, there also, as we're looking and waiting, um, we can start talking about, um, looking at from a police aspect, other aspects, um, you know, maybe some future, depending on timeframe, some future traffic calming, not only traffic calming that would go if the road was to go through, because anything we'd sell to residents, we'd have to have some things. So some different ways or looking at some different options on some traffic calming, whether it goes through or it doesn't go through, we can start looking at those options too, and we can discuss some of those with you.
Thanks.
Thank you. I got several announcements to make. On Ju, uh, Saturday, June twenty-third, we have the Tarpon Fast Music Bash at five PM to eleven PM on East Court Street. We use it on the other side of the, which is unique. Um, same day, June twenty-third, we have the Recreation Family double there for a night at five PM at the Community Center. And we have, uh, several, uh, businesses that I like to welcome to Tarpon Springs, the Tarpon Springs Dialysis Centers, that we're gonna do the ribbon cutting, I think, at some time, uh, this week.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday. The Andres Greek Grill and Pan Pizza on Tarpon Avenue, Sandra Dumbos Creations, Tarpon Springs Pizzeria, Paula Storm and Interstate Background Research. And I like to welcome them to Tarpon Springs. Um, I also returned from a trip to Athens. Well, uh, when I was there, I met with the Greek Minister of Education, and we discussed the needs to, uh, bring certified teachers to Tarpon Springs on the Tampa Bay area for to teach Greek as a second language. And we also discussed the sister city programs, our education exchange, which is part of our, uh, sister city program as well. So I'm hoping that, uh, in the near future, we'll have more teachers to come here to teach Greek as a second language. Well, that concludes the regulation session meeting, and it's adjourned at eight fifty-seven PM. Well, that concludes the regularization meeting, and it's adjourned at eight fifty-seven PM.